Good afternoon, everyone. We want to thank you for your patience as we finish our workshop. You've got an opportunity to kind of hear some of the critical issues that will come up in this meeting. We're going to go ahead and call to order our March 23rd, 2017 City of Palaca Commission meeting. At this time, we'll have our invocation by the Reverend Alonzo Mulberry III, pastor of Soul Mission Church of God in Christ. We'd also ask Pastor Mulberry if he could lead us in the class. Would anyone please stand at this time?
Thank you. Father, we thank you once again for allowing us to come together and thank you for this session. We pray, Lord, that you would give guidance, that you would give wisdom, that you would look on each board member, that you would bless them, God, with what is necessary in order to move this city forward. We pray, God, that you would give wisdom and give the prudence to things that are on the agenda, that your people may be blessed, that, God, things that are necessary to move forward in this community. Let it be so according to thy will. Bless us now in Jesus' name. Amen.
(inaudible) Go to the floor, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown is absent. Mr. Borum.
Present.
Mr. Campbell.
Present.
Mr. Wayans.
Here.
All members or four members are present in county county or you have the form.
Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the minutes from our April 9th, 2017 workshop and also our regular meeting as well as the March 15th call meeting?
Motion to approve, second.
There's a motion on the floor in the second. Is there any unreadiness?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now we'll move on to item number one on the agenda, which is our recognition and presentation. Just bear with me one moment. We would ask that the airport staff and advisory board, if any members are present, would you please come forward at this time? Mr. Uhl. This proclamation reads as follows: Whereas aviation plays a critical role in the lives of our citizens as well as in the operation of our business, agriculture, and tourism industries; and whereas Florida has a significant interest in the continued vitality of aviation, aircraft, and aerospace manufacturing, commercial services, and community airports, and aviation education; with twenty commercial service airports and one hundred eight general aviation airports, Florida continues to meet the growing demand for air service and support of the state's tourist industry; as more than half of Florida's visitors arrive each year by air; and whereas more than eight point five percent of the gross state product results from business dependent upon aviation; and Florida's commercial airports accommodate more than one hundred forty-nine point three million passengers annually, ranking third in the nation; international airports in Florida accommodate more than thirty point four million international passengers annually, which is twenty point four percent of the total international passengers in the nation; and whereas the Florida general aviation community airports accommodate more than nine billion visitors and business travelers annually; and general aviation represents more than ten point three billion dollars in annual economic activity in Florida; and whereas the general aviation not only supports Florida economy, it improves overall quality of life by supporting emergency medical and healthcare services, law enforcement, firefighting, and disaster relief, and by transporting business travelers to the destination quickly and safely. Now therefore, I, Terrill Hill Mayor of the City of Palaca, Florida, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, hereby endorses and proclaims April 2017 as Aviation Appreciation Month in the City of Palaca, and we call upon its citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities to honor the history, accomplishments, and contributions of aviation, as well as the contributions of the members of the Palaca Airport Advisory Board, make all your diviability of the Palaca Municipal Airport and witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and call to be affixed the seal of the City of Palaca, Florida, on this twenty-third day of March in the year of our Lord 2017. Terrill Hill Mayor, Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy M. Williams, Commissioners. If I could add the proclamation, thank you, Mayor.
That's very nice of you. The last ten years north of fifteen million dollars have been put into the airport. It's been tremendous teamwork, tremendous support from the city, and the cities out there before that have been only one point four million dollars. So I think the majority of that money has come from FAA and the Fire Department Transportation. And we've got a great friend in the Fire Department Transportation. They have given us a lot of train money and had no cost to the city, called Rural Economic Development Initiative Program money. So anyway, please come out and see your airport is your airport. Please put that anywhere on your calendar, come out for our annual flying. And just know that the outlet for general aviation is upward trajectory, and Jacksonville grows and San Francisco grows, this airport just becomes a little more important to the city. And Mayor, thank you very much. (inaudible).
Next up is our U-Turn Anti-Drug and Alcohol Week. Mr. Casey, Casey. Is there anyone else here from U-Turn as well?
Not a lot.
Let's come up and join you, please. This proclamation reads as follows: Whereas Palaca and Putnam County have a high incidence of crime, which is intimately related to the rate of drug and alcohol addiction amongst its citizens, which is related to poverty levels, death caused by accidental drug overdoses and prescription drugs, which are easily attainable, are increasing every year. The problem has grown to an academic proportion among children and adults in Palaca and Putnam County. Whereas nearly every family has been adversely affected by the drug and/or alcohol abuse addiction of a family member, whether a parent, child, grandparent, aunt, uncle, or cousin. And whereas substance abuse and mental disorders, serious public health problems, twenty-three point one million people aged twelve or older, or nine point one percent of all Americans need treatment for illicit substance or alcohol abuse or dependence, and that number increases every year. Nine percent of Americans needing treatment for substance abuse are receiving it, leaving twenty point five million people still in need. We must continue to reach the millions who are in need because treatment and recovery improves the community's welfare and provide a renewed outlook on life for those who struggle with substance use disorders, their family and friends. And whereas it's not the sole responsibility of law enforcement to combat Putnam County's drug addiction and alcohol addiction problem and result in violent crimes. Resources exist online and in our community to increase people's awareness of society's issues, and education is essential to overcoming misconceptions about treatment and how substance abuse affects children. Families in our society, and whereas Southside Baptist Church will host the U-Turn Anti-Drug and Alcohol Dependence Community Outreach on Saturday, April 8th, 2017. The purpose of this event is to call together our community, citizens, families, church leaders and congregations, local government leaders, local county and city law enforcement, mental health, drug coalitions, who have been affected either personally or professionally by the facet of drug and alcohol addiction issues, mentally, spiritually, and/or physically. Now therefore, I, Terrill Hill Mayor of the City of Palaca, Florida, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of April 2nd through 8th, 2017, as U-Turn Anti-Drug and Alcohol Dependence Community Outreach Week in the City of Palaca, and encourage all citizens to get involved and to support this community-wide initiative and to educate themselves and one another about the issues surrounding addiction, treatment, and recovery, and how it helps improve the lives of family, friends, and community as a whole. And witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and call to be affixed to seal the City of Palaca, Florida, on this twenty-third day of March in the year of our Lord 2017. Terrill Hill Mayor, Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy M. Williams, Commissioners.
I'm here this evening on behalf of U-Turn Community Outreach for the presentation of proclamation declaring April 2017 as the month for community awareness and unity in combating drug and alcohol addiction in the City of Palaca, Florida. U-Turn in partnership with Teen Challenge International is Putnam County's community outreach that addresses drug and alcohol addiction problem that plays our city, county, and its citizens. U-Turn Community Outreach now in its seventh year of addressing drug and alcohol prevention, awareness, offering referrals and help, and most of all, hope for those in need. This year's event, there will be kids, activities, education, and information, drama, and testimonies from Teen Challenge South Florida, and from our local Celebrate Recovery group headed up by Jeremy and Melissa Ray. This year's event will be co- emcee by my daughters, Shannon Case and Rui, and Hope FM's Ricky Bobby. We also have some very special guests coming back, past to Bernie Gillett and his wife, Kathy, who are Global Evangelism Coordinators with Teen Challenge International. Bernie and Kathy travel all over the world teaching program directors how to help people make a U-Turn in their life. Of course, we'll have live music for the jobs, ramones, band, free food, drinks, snow cones, popcorn, lots of door prizes and fun for the whole family. The entire event is all free to all who attend. U-Turn was originated at Southside Baptist Church through personal experience and was held at the church in 2011 and 2012. Then in 2013, it evolved into U-Turn Community Outreach and became a community-wide event and was held at the Riverfront Park, and again there in 2014. Then in 2015, the event was relocated to county-owned property, the John Theobald Sports Complex, at 124th Road, Palaca, which was called the Hotel, which was built at the previous site. The event was held there again in 2016 and will be the home of this year's event as well. It takes a lot to put this on, and the goal of U-Turn all along has been to help local people who are ready to make a U-Turn in their life by turning away from their addiction. I'm happy to report that we have been able to do that since 2015, when U-Turn presented its first scholarship to a young lady who has successfully completed a Teen Challenge Recovery Program, helped her attend Emerging Leaders College to earn a degree in ministry. She is now a program director at a Teen Challenge facility in Pensacola, Florida. Since then, U-Turn has presented scholarships for half a dozen other local young women and men to enter Teen Challenge Recovery Program. This is all made possible solely by the generous giving of local businesses, churches, and individuals in our community, just like you. We're still accepting event sponsorship for this year's event if anyone would like to give. Of course, we accept general contributions year-round. U-Turn Community Outreach is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that's fully tax-deductible. There are no paid staff, and all proceeds beyond the cause of putting on the outreach event go towards helping local people make a U-Turn in their life. U-Turn now has a website, u-turnoutreach.org, where you can learn more about U-Turn and even make an online contribution. Putnam County has its share of serious problems and tragedy related to drug and alcohol addiction. Every individual is affected in some way or another. Maybe you have a friend, coworker, or a family member who is suffering from an addiction. Or maybe you or someone you know has been the victim of a crime such as robbery, home invasion, domestic violence, loss of income, loss of property, and even loss of life. Putnam County has and is experiencing all of these things. There was a pastor from the town of Manchester, Kentucky, where they once had a serious drug epidemic, who said, "What's worse than the darkness is the lack of light from our local churches." I think Palaca and Putnam County could relate to this same thing, and U-Turn is here to shed some light on the issue of drug and alcohol addiction in Palaca and Putnam County. Now with thirteen sponsoring churches from different denominations yoking arms with each other, U-Turn was designed to share the love of Jesus with the community in a non-threatening and non-condemning environment, and then through the witness and testimony of those who have made a U-Turn in their life, that can speak it and live it before others, and can cause those who live in the bondage of addiction to see it and want that abundance for their own life. In fact, the U-Turn theme verse is 2 Corinthians 5:17, which states, "Therefore, any man being pride is a new preacher. Old things are passed away, but all things are new." That's where the true U-Turn takes place in a person's life. It's eternal with or without a drug or alcohol addiction. Any other way is only temporary and short-lived. U-Turn is always held in the springtime to correlate with the newness of life all around us. U-Turn is making the difference in the lives of others. There are many others from Putnam and surrounding areas that turned their life around and are now living clean and sober, happy and healthy life. U-Turn stands ready to assist any local individual who is ready to make a U-Turn in their life away from drug and/or alcohol addiction by helping them get into a Christian recovery program. Lastly, I want to thank all of you, the mayor and the city commissioners, for the support that you have shown since the inception of U-Turn. It takes a community coming together to reach the community through outreach. U-Turn stands on a foundation of Christ unity, where Christians and community come together to work for good. We are so thankful for our government agencies, the businesses, and the churches, and the fellow citizens that help us continue to reach out to the community and letting them know that we care about them, there's a hope and a future for them that is free from the bondage of addiction. Everyone being a bitch when someone is headed down a path of destruction making a U-Turn in their life. Thank you and God bless.
We also have some posters and flyers we're going to leave on the table back here if anybody would like to get one. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Let's give Mr. Case another round of applause.
Ultimately, times in this community, we take lightly the effects of drug addiction to byproduct of poverty and byproduct of poor choices, but it affects so many people, young people, it affects you the same way in your families and your homes, you may know friends as well. But here's an opportunity for the community to come together as a whole, stand in unity for a great cause, and we encourage everyone to take part in that celebration on April 8th. Next, we'll ask Ms. Lisa Palukovic if she would come forward. This is a proclamation that reads as follows: Whereas service to others is a hallmark of American character, in central Ohio, we meet our challenges. Cities are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet their needs. Whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenges faced in our communities, from educating students for jobs in the 21st century, and supporting veterans and military families, to providing health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters. National service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities, providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. Whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participates in more than fifty thousand locations across the country, fostering the civic neighborhood and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. National Service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve, both through their direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas National Service requests, represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in the community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayers' dollars. National Service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intense commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And Corporation for National and Community Services shares a priority with city and county officials and mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, Cities of Service, and mayors, cities, and county officials across the country for Mayor's City and County Recognition Day of Service on April 4th, 2014. Now therefore, I, Terrill Hill Mayor of the City of Palaca, on behalf of this Palaca City Commission, hereby proclaim April 4th, 2017, as National Day of Service Recognition Day in the City of Palaca, and we call upon all citizens to recognize the positive impact of national service in our community and county, and to thank those who served and find ways to give back to their community. And witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and call to be affixed the seal of the City of Palaca, Florida, on this 23rd day of March in the year of our Lord 2017. Terrill Hill Mayor, Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy M. Williams, Commissioners. Ms. Lee, do you want to go ahead and tell us who these young ladies are?
I'm so happy today to introduce you to Grandma Bobby. She is our volunteer, actually, our first-year volunteer over at Mo's Elementary School, and Grandma Deb, who works over at Melon Elementary School. And I just wanted, on behalf of the Foster Grandparent Program, Communities and Schools, and the Corporation for National Community Services, just wanted to thank you so much for supporting our program for all these years. Our program has been around for the past fourteen years, and these wonderful ladies and thirty-six other volunteers served throughout Putnam County, working one-on-one or in small groups with children that need some extra academic support and just some attention and some love. And they do a fantastic job in just making a difference in our young people by giving them a chance to see their own strengths and to grow. I want to thank all of our support from the Putnam County School District, Ms. Kewber, who's worked with us for many years, and I found Mr. Adams here tonight, and Mr. Campbell, who always worked with a couple of our grandmas over the years, and just say how wonderful they are in making a difference in the lives of children. So thank you so much for recognizing our volunteers. I appreciate it.
I'm happy and honored of having, when I taught first grade and the beginning of the year teaching kindergarten, I've seen firsthand the work that grandparents put in working with our students. For some of the students, this is some of the only love that they get from an older, I don't want to say older, from a season. And the relationships that the grandparents form with our kids are ones that they will remember for a lifetime. So personally, as someone firsthand who had grandparents in my room, I'm forever grateful for this program and the service that they give to our kids. You have some of them there that are there every day, all day, waiting for you, hand in hand, you know, reading with our kids, doing everything that the teachers do with the kids, and it's definitely something that's appreciated in the classroom. So again, thank you for everything that you do.
This is a great opportunity for us to pair wisdom with youthful exuberance, and also just for the record, Ms. Milton makes the best oatmeal cookies in town. Now we'll move on to our Water Conservation Month. Proclamation will ask former county commissioner, Brad Percival, to come forward at this time. Proclamation reads as follows: Whereas water is a basic and essential need of every living creature, clean and sustainable water resource is vital to Florida's environment, economy, and quality of life. More than ninety percent of Florida's drinking water is supplied by underlying aquifers. And our quality of life and the economy depends upon a reliable, clean, and available water supply and healthy environment. And whereas the St. John's River Water Management District is working with the state of Florida, other water management districts, local governments, and water supply utilities to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation and to increase efforts to conserve water. And whereas City of Palaca has joined St. John's River Water Management District in encouraging and supporting water conservation through its water supply planning processes, coordination of educational programs, and special events, cooperative funding, technical assistance, and regulatory programs. And whereas all water users, including residential, commercial, industrial, agricultural, institutional, hospitality, private citizens, and others can make positive contributions to reduce water use and protect Florida's water resources. Whereas the St. John's River Water Management District, City of Palaca, and other local government, utilities, businesses, agricultural, environmental organizations, and other parties with an interest in water use are developing a comprehensive and long-term water conservation program to instill a lasting culture of conservation in our communities. And whereas the governor and the cabinet of the state of Florida are designating April as Florida's Water Conservation Month to encourage for agents to conserve the state's precious water resources. Now therefore, I, Terrill Hill Mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, hereby proclaim the month of April 2017 as Water Conservation Month in the City of Palaca. I call upon each resident, visitor, and business to protect our precious resource by practicing water conservation measures and becoming more aware of the need to conserve water. And witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and call to be affixed the seal of the City of Palaca, Florida, on this 23rd day of March in the year of our Lord 2017. Terrill Hill Mayor, Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy M. Williams, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, staff. Thank you for bringing awareness to water conservation. And I'm just going to limit my comments. I think I'm between parents and students and educators, between dinner and maybe some homework. So I'm going to limit my remarks to just say thank you very much for this. As a representative of the Water Management District Governing Board, Dr. Shortell, Executive Director, and the district family, we have a great relationship with the city. I'm excited about an agenda item later on that makes the type of investment that I think the presentation earlier, you know, begins to correct that. So I appreciate that partnership that we have. And with that, have a good night.
Student of the month for March 2017 has been canceled. Commissioner Campbell, would you join me today? Student of the month is always an important celebration for us. One, it gives us the most amount of happy people that we get to see at any time the commission begins. But secondly, it also gives us an opportunity to really start to acknowledge great people in our community. And the first group that we want to acknowledge are our teachers and our educators. We never get an opportunity to truly say thank you to these folks enough for the things that they do with our young people. So at this time, we would ask that all educators, would you stand, and those who are in the hall, would you raise your hand at least so that we can take this time to recognize you and tell you thank you for the wonderful job that you do with our children. and tell you thank you for the wonderful job that you do with our children. And next to our family and friends who've come here to join our young people, we'd ask that you stand and be recognized because this would not be possible without you. So to all our family and friends who've accompanied our young folks, would you please stand up forward at this time? And now, as we begin our roll call for our Student of the Month, we would ask that the representatives from the school join the students up front. As your name is called, once we have every name, once we go through all the names, we'll take a brief recess so that family members can take pictures. We'll take one photo for the newspaper, and for any family that wants to take the group photo, and then we'll have a single file line, and at that point, we'll take individual photos as needed. And so what we'll do at this time is we'll go ahead and continue on with our Student of the Month, and the first student from both the elementary school, Lizzie Garcia. From Brown appears Elementary, Omari and Mack. From CLO Junior Sixth Grade Center, Anna Cordova. From Children's Reading Center, Lexi Hansford. Mr. Campbell's cousin from E.H. Miller Cameron Rush. Co's Lucas's grandson. From James Long Elementary, Cullen Sloan. From Dickens Middle School, Emma Murrow. From Palaca High School, Landon Madden. From Penile Baptist Academy, Adria. From Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences, Emily Terrill. And also, from Putnam Edge High School, he's unable to attend tonight.
He's here.
Is he here?
He's here.
Oh, great. Luke Lee. Jake, we're going to make your certificate and make sure that we have that for you. We're going to get that before we take a picture.
And Mayor, we have one more from Penile Baptist Academy. Eli, he was for, by February, he was supposed to be on the roster for three.
Eli Sweet?
Yes, sir.
From February?
Yes, sir.
And make sure we make the picture to you as well. So, there's one thing I learned in third grade, and it's a very simple thing. My teacher, Ms. Green, would always say this to us, and I repeat it every month that we come up here. And we open every day up by saying, "I am somebody." If my mind can conceive it and my heart can believe it, I know I can achieve it because I am somebody. Each and every one of you students standing up here today, you're somebody great. You're destined for greatness. Just continue to realize that education is the key to success. Stay humble, stay grounded, and just continue to work hard and make your family proud because you are somebody, and we're definitely proud of you. Okay, guys? Okay, let's give them another round of applause. So we apologize again for not having those certificates ready for you guys, but we're going to have those before you smile and take a picture, okay? So what we're going to do is take a brief recess at this time. We'll go ahead and take individual pictures first so that we can take our group picture last, and that'll give us time to make sure we got those two certificates for you, okay? We got you ready. So if everyone will line up over here in the single file line, we'll go ahead and start taking photos. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. We're going to move into public comment. Item number two on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. If you're here for public comment, we'd ask that you fill out a yellow speaker's card in the back prior to coming in. Is there anyone here for public comment? Ms. Kitchen, would you please come up at this time?
I'm here with Kitchen, Pennsylvania, 7th South 12th Street. I would just like, I'd ask the commission to do a favor, as you all heard now, J.C. Hitties store is apparently closing, the Palaca store. J.C. Hitties opened their first quarter store in the City of Palaca in 1918, I believe it was. They've been there about 99 years. And I failed to get the committee commissioner to, yeah, I think that's some things happening. But I would like for the commission to write a letter to the J.C. Hitties Corporation and remind them of the Hitties history in the state of Florida that started in Palaca, and I think, ask them to keep this store open. It not only means jobs, but it's also, I think, it's the PR for J.C. Hitties. We're the hub in between Jacksonville, Lakeview, and all this thing, and Gainesville. And I think they have, if they still have their store open, it was open here in 1918, would be good publicity for them, and people would enjoy it, and they would come here and shop also. So I would like to ask the commission to please send a letter to the J.C. Hitties Corporation and ask them not to move out of the City of Palaca. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Signo, one who closed public comment. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Item three, A, Adopt Resolution Number 2017-12-26, authorizing the execution of St. John's River Water Management District Fiscal Year 2017 Cost Share Agreement Number 30241 for Palaca Historic District Potable Water Project. B, Adopt Resolution 2017-12-27, authorize execution of an agreement with Halifax Paving for Crystal Cove Resurfacing Project in an amount of $41,360, contract based upon Putnam County's contract pricing per Halifax paving competitive bid submitted to Putnam County Board of County Commissioners. C, Grant Permission to Exceed Level Noise Levels, hence to close 300, 400 blocks of St. John's Avenue for duration of the event for special events permanent number 17-03. Top is closed in April 8, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m., Arts Council, Greater Palaca, Denise Akins, applicant. D, Authorize Closure of Certain Streets to Vehicle and Traffic for Special Events Permanent Number 17-30, long course and torch run for Special Olympics Thursday, 4/13/17, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Pending approval, Special Events Coordinator and PB, Special Events, Putnam County, and the Coalition applicant. E, Adopt Resolution Number 2017-12-28, urging all members of the Florida Legislature to oppose the adoption of House Bill 17 and Senate Bill 1158, which will preempt county and municipal home rule powers. Are there any items other than item 3C on the agenda that you wish to have approved?
Yes, 3E.
Are there any other items? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve all items with exception of C and E.
Second.
For 3E.
Second by Commissioner Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item, let's go to item 3E first.
I distributed an amended resolution. This is the first one that was distributed with the agenda is referencing the adoption of House Bill 17 and Senate Bill 1158. That's the one that preempts the city and county municipal home rule powers when it comes to commerce. And also, I added in a second one that I've just distributed, the one that, let's see. It also opposes House Bill 13 and Senate Bill 1170, which places limitations upon community redevelopment agencies, or CRA. So if you'd like to adopt the original one, adopt the original one. If you'd like to amend it to adopt the one that opposes restrictions on CRA's, you can adopt the amended one.
And then place a restriction that gets rid of CRA.
Yes.
It's not 2030.
But they call it restrictions.
So, motion to approve the amended item 3E resolution.
Motion to approve amended, Adam.
Second. This is a second floor, it's any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item 3C, are we ready? Item 3C, top explosion. Keep talking. Ready yet, Mr. Crowe?
Unless the application has been amended, I had not signed off on the special application due to the road closure and the public safety issue and the applicant not wanting to use officers for that event. If the roads are closed, it actually triggers the special enforcement portion, but it does for a public safety issue as well for the period of time they're looking to close the roads. So I, in that term, decided not to sign off on the application unless the application was changed not to close the roads. Other than that, they would have to actually get lost with some officers.
Mr. Crowe?
The applicants here, they have some suggestions. We usually like to have the police department work things out, and I guess at this point they haven't reached a consensus.
We were just, actually, I'm here representing Denise Akins, the Arts Council. She spoke with somebody at the police department, and they apparently said we had to have one police officer, or we could get away with one police officer. And then we asked if we could possibly waive that because we've never had that before, and so that's why I'm here to...
Do you guys think you can take a moment to talk this over and come back with a solution?
I mean, if it's the difference between us not having the festival and paying for a police officer, we'll pay for a police officer.
Well, I'll tell you what, you guys take a couple of minutes, by the time I get through this, we'll call it back up when you're ready. Item number four, Resolution Adopting the Palaca Wastewater Potable Water Fiscal Sustainability Analysis and Asset Management Plan Developed by the Florida Rural Water Association.
Yes, sir, General Sheriff of the Public Works, Director. As stated at the workshop earlier, you have two very link-deep plans in front of you. It is essential that these plans are adopted so it doesn't jeopardize our appropriation requests and any future SRF funding. We do have one secured SRF loan currently. It's a planning loan which will turn into a construction loan, which will necessitate these plans being adopted. They can be amended as you see fit, and I would expect that we would probably amend them annually as we go through the budget process.
Will you be adopting this treaty?
A resolution of the City of Palaca, Florida, accepting the City of Palaca wastewater and potable water fiscal sustainability analysis and asset management plans developed by the Florida Rural Water Association in partnership with Florida Department of Environmental Protection, or FDEP.
Motion approved. Second. So motion of authority, second. Is there any further discussion?
Questions?
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold on, hold me one second. Let's open the floor up public here. Is there anyone here for public here? Signo, one who closed public here.
I've got one.
I'm sorry, I've got a couple. I'm looking fast. You're trying to hold me up.
I appreciate that, Mayor.
Oh, I hadn't called you up yet.
I'm looking for you, Houston, 27th South 12th Street, Palaca, Florida. I would first like to request that you table this for the next meeting, as I have to get down to read the thousand or so pages in this two-book whippets. But if you don't table it, I'd like to make a couple of comments. I'm one of the ones that went on the 1886 water lines. I've had no problem with my water at my house since 1952, when my family moved in there. The only thing I had was a pressure problem. I got new PVC lines put in from the waterway into the house, and then the pressure is now great. But that being said, I had no problem with the presentation that I saw from the two gentlemen about Palaca wastewater and potable water fiscal sustainability analysis. However, the $200 a month wage increase, base wage of water, I had a big problem with that, and to use one of Mr. Moses' terms, it gave me heartburn, big time. Can I pay for it? Yes, I have my health insurance to pay for it. But, $200, literally, that's exorbitant, and I don't know if that's written in the analysis because, again, I didn't have time to read the thousand pages in roughly 30 minutes. So that's why I would like you to table it. But in lieu of that, I did come in, paying back in, and heard Matt Mills saying that it would be more like $28 a month. Well, that's a lot better. I mean, seriously. And then he also said it'd be phased in over a period of time, and I don't get it one time. $28 a month, I don't like it, but it's way better than $200. But I would ask you to table this for the next meeting, but I specifically would ask you, please, do not accept anything that shows a $200 a month wage. Thank you.
Well, it's for one year. The thing is, is that the plan itself is just showing what a rate restructure recommendation for a restructure does show. That's not going to be the rate. We'd actually go through adopting rates if we do annually anyway.
Okay, please, set that on record so that if we have a bad record...
Yeah, so it's just...
Thirty for one year. I mean, if I brought my gun, it's a long, I can't get it back after a year.
But that's no different than the rate study that was done when you were here in the commission.
You never saw $200 a month, right? I paid the damn wage.
You also never saw anybody try to recoup 18 million in one year.
No, that's true, but I just wanted to make sure that you understood that I'm very uncomfortable with $200 a month. $28 is a little bit better, but, you know, $200...
Well, I think we're all uncomfortable with $200 a month.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Jenny Eisen.
Jerry.
Jerry, I'm sorry. Your handwriting looks like mine.
Yeah, I'm a quick guy. I'm Jerry Eisen, living on 3rd Road Street. Unlike what she said about 12th Street, 12th Street has a serious problem. About once a month, a water line will break, and my water becomes so filthy that you can stick your hand under the water within an inch, you cannot see your hand anymore. I just finished redoing the bathroom, about $5,000, and they're already stained, two tubs, toilets, sinks. This was within the last month. I have a filtration system in my house, and it will clog it up within no time at all. The money for these filters and stuff like that is ridiculous, and my question has always been with the city in the past, when I come down here and talk to Jonathan, is when is this going to be done? Replacing all heights in the City of Palaca's River Street and any other streets that have the same problems, instead of just replacing little pieces as they break in the road erosion underneath. I've seen holes in the road in River Street so large you could put a bus in them from the water running out. So the question is, how to do this, not waiting years to come to see it. Water in my house, we don't drink it because we don't have a clue what's in it. The average color on it is light, you can see a light beige to it at all times, and I've seen the pipes that they open up in the streets after they've been broken, and they're literally three-quarters full of sediment. So repairing is not the thing, and I agree with you, if you're going the route... So, repairing is not the thing, and I agree with you, if you're going the route of totally replacing everything. And as far as the piping in my home, it's all within the 90s and above. So, it's all PVC, redone, nothing wrong with that. And I just, like I said, I just put filtration systems... I'd just like to see something done. I've been down here with pictures multiple times showing, and I appreciate some sort of understanding.
Well, I'll tell you, same thing I said earlier. Those water lines are from as late as 1886, well, before I was born. So this isn't a new problem. We've gone to Washington DC, we've been to Tallahassee the last few days, addressing the same problem, trying to deal with the issue. We've also adopted a plan for tax increment financing within the South Historic District to look at replacing up to $2 million of the water lines within the next few months, starting to work towards that plan. So that plan is in the works. It's just not a situation where we're looking to kick the can down the road. We understand that that problem came along before we all came to Palatka.
Correct.
But again, there has to be options. What we want to do is take these next few weeks or so to actually bring citizens in here to have real dialogue about this, because it's not a problem that should remain to anybody's community. It's a problem that's a community problem, and we don't want to be Flint, Michigan, but we are very close to being just that. But what we want to do is we want to sit down and find out what's the consensus, come up with a consensus on how we deal with it, because everyone can't pay $200 a month. Everyone can't afford the $12 a month increase. But we've got to find a way to do the greatest amount of good for the greatest number of people in this community, which allows us to move forward, and we've also got to create opportunities for the citizens who don't consume water in the same way to create some conservation opportunities. And so, we are devising a plan, a true plan. This is a plan that's probably 100 years late, but it's a plan that has to be in effect for the greater good. There have been some lines replaced, but overall, it isn't. And I always equate what's going on in this community to, we're pushing Zephyr Hills water through dirty glasses, and so that's kind of where we are. But we're moving forward with the plan. Mr. Griffin and the rest of the staff have made work diligently towards coming up with a plan. There's some excellent ideas on the table, but we need to put from citizens as well. And so, we are moving in, and I definitely understand your concern.
You have my number, if you'd like to call me in, I'd like to come down.
Yeah, we're gonna... So just look forward, we're gonna announce the workshop. We'll have citizens coming, and we'll talk. We all know what the problem is, now it's just time to find a solution.
Right, well, as I said, I've been asking for years. This is the best I've heard in a long time, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the Commissioner?
Well, I'd just say, either way, we're gonna move forward. I mean, again, like the mayor said, we've been working on this thing for the last three years, going to Tallahassee, going to DC, talking before the legislators and different things of that nature. So, there are some things that we already have in the works that you should see come to fruition in a very short time period, within the next few months. So, the overall comprehensive plan has been put together by staff, and they've done an excellent job. So, again, we understand the issues that you're seeing, and we're ahead of the curve, we're getting ahead of the curve. We're not going to wait till we get to a Flint, Michigan, scenario.
Anybody else? All right. No one else here for public comment? We're gonna have a public comment. Got a motion in a second? Is there any further discussion? Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Recalling, receipt.
This one, I might say slipped and cracked a bit because we were working with the applicant, and we left the applicant to work with the police department, and I think that it was pursued to the full extent that it could have from the applicant's perspective, but we had a quick pow-wow in the other room, and I'll let the chief speak to the policing aspects of it. I will say that you have an item eight on your agenda later on, which pertains to potential waiver fees for this event. And it kind of ties into this situation, because we can't waive fees when they're in the code like this. However, the CRA can essentially provide a small grant like you did for the Isaiah Festival, and I believe that's what the applicant is requesting. And just to kind of get you thinking about before you get to it, any kind of motion approving fees for that, and this directly pertains to the police presence, because that cost is the cost of the police folks who are watching, doing what they're doing at the activity. Any motion would have to be contingent on the CRA granting that stipend essentially. So that's an important point to remember, when we get to that point. I'll let the chief talk to the law enforcement office there.
Are the discussions with the applicant? The applicant agreed to pay for an officer position, minus any other assistance he may receive from the city? If he received assistance from CRA, then the bill or that would be taken care of on the CRA as far as who would be responsible for it. But we did agree that minus that approval, he would be responsible for an officer's position.
What about the... When they have a duty of that nature, do they also have rescue there as well?
Rescue on standby?
Yeah.
Anytime we do any of the special events, we put rescue on standby. They are not on scene, but rescue is put on standby for that purpose, may wear the event.
Just to add to that, prior rescue or life safety services are required for Class A events, so rescue is negotiated depending on the day.
Okay, thank you.
Heard recommendations. Down, is there any further questions? Not, is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Do we understand what costs is associated with the office?
Yes, we've discussed cost and the amount of cost for the officers, as well as the amount of time that the officer will be needing. So he is fully aware of the total cost for the event?
I believe it's $270, is that correct?
Seventy-six.
$276, yes.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve?
I just have to ask this question, for one clarification. From what I believe, I heard, number eight?
We're not there. Because we're gonna, if we're gonna approve the event, we need to approve the event before we waive the fees, and then we can do it in order. That's just where we are. So, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion on the floor, a second. Is there any further discussion? Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now, I want to move up item number eight on the agenda, if you guys can stay. Item eight on the agenda. A request for a fee waiver?
So, from my understanding, what I've heard the planning director say, is that if we waive anything, that's including the fee for the police, right?
Yes, and just to clarify, Commissioner Campbell, that the fees for this is a $50 permit fee, which is waived already because it's a public event, open to the public, there's no fundraising involved, so they meet criteria for waiver of the permit fee, $50. However, the police fees are not waived for that kind of event. What they're asking for is essentially a small grant to cover the police cost. You can't waive it, but you can pay from the CRA.
But that would have been something to be...
CRA via... Right, so any motion you make has to be contingent, essentially, on future action by the CRA.
But CRA would meet between now and the event.
It would have to be after the fact. They would have to pay the fee essentially and get a rebate if they get that CRA grant.
I don't think that's probably the best practice to... And I mean, I understand, and I'm all for the event, but I don't think backtracking something like that is the best practice, and I'm speaking for myself. I can't support that.
And I'm gonna say this, and it may be out of turn, but it is. We've opened the floodgate. Everybody in town who has a festival, has an event, has come forward and asked that their fees be waived. So why do we even have fees on the books if every organization's gonna come forward with fees? I watch these organizations come in and get funding from various sources, from the TDC own, for events, that they've never asked for fees to be waived on. But because one organization came in for the porch fest and asked for fees to be waived, we've now had everybody jump on the bandwagon and do the same thing. I mean, everybody understands the financial situation that the city is in, every penny counts, we're all on the same team, so why do we keep trying to... Why are we trying to milk the cow? And we don't have to. What we need to do is all get on board and try to make this stuff work. So, at some point, we've all got to stop taking advantage of each other and move forward and try to work together. But everybody's asking for a fee waiver, and in some cases, we have to work these events. It's not fair to sanitation or streets or anyone else that has folks there and have to work these things. If we're throwing these events, then there needs to... The costs associated with throwing the events is a part of your planning process, and it's time for us to start that as we move forward with those events. I mean, I'm shooting the messenger, but I just think that if you plan these grand events and you're looking to bring outside sources in, and you're doing all these things, then you need to calculate the fact that there really be costs associated with it. If it's not truly a partnership with the city, then your organization needs to plan for that. Because we've opened the floodgates, and it's just, it's not necessary in some cases.
And with all due respect, I think we should have set the precedent at the beginning when we allowed the porch fest, when we approved the funding for their program. We should have done it then, we should have drew the line in the sand at that time as well. So I do understand why a lot of people are coming forth asking for these grants, but I think it should have been set forth at the beginning. We should have drawn the line, drew the line in the sand.
Set the precedent, because we had the same conversation there, that we needed to put a stop in it, and I have a problem with if you have the money to put forward to pay it now, why can't it stay there? So, that's just my take, and if there's... I mean, I'm ready to entertain a motion. Well, I can do that, but I would...
I'm ready to entertain a motion.
We did approve the porch fest, but they did not utilize the money, and I think that spilled over into the Isaiah Festival when they had that, and that's when Sam, DPI, came before us, and then we approved that, those points that we did not spend. So now we're here.
I think so. If we're gonna draw a line in the sand, we need to draw it and just stick to it.
But that has to be done through the CRA.
Well, let's draw it, brother.
We draw a line in the sand.
Is there a motion?
I would make the motion to reject the waiving of the fees for the special, well, the special event fees for the chop fest.
Second. Motion, a second on the floor, is any further discussion?
Question?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Can I clarify the Arts Council's position?
The Council's position is no.
Oh, I know, but we weren't trying to be one of the festivals. In fact, it is a miscommunication of how it works, so...
It's not totally directed at you, it's directed at the process. It's more our fault than yours. Administrator reports. Jill. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, no, we got one more. Lot of presentation, I'm sorry, Mr. Parker. Forgive me. I can take it out of order.
Oh, you brought your...
You'll see why I meant it. Tim Parker, Putnam County Crop Repraiser, 312 Oak Street. Thank you for having me here tonight. I first wanted to commend our city commission on how well we have avoided being in the spotlight concerning race relations in our community, especially considering how volatile that subject's been in and around our country. It's about community involvement, and it's about leadership, and that has been accomplished by you, so thank you very much. So I did not realize the topic, when the campaign was on your last meeting agenda. Had I realized that, I would have still had scheduling conflict and couldn't be here. So thank you very much for just tabling that motion, and for making a motion to table it so that we could give you a little bit better grasp from what we're trying to accomplish. So I think you all have a copy of that presentation, or at least a handout that was provided to our logic committee, all right? Betsy, there is a typo probably in your presentation, so I left a CD over there that has the correct wording in it. So, I was trying to put together a presentation tonight, and I was trying to relate it to some of the areas of interest, and how could we move forward with this? So if you give a child in school a textbook, and they never open it, what good does it do them? If you have the best paper towels and tissue ever made, why would you need to even advertise? If you have an excellent reputation in the community for providing professional services, word of mouth advertising is probably good enough. So, can we as a community and as a county never open our book, or seek professional advice on how to enhance our image, or how to let the rest of the state, country, and beyond know the positive aspects we have to offer? Even if we're the friendliest, cleanest, best value in the state and no one knows it, how does that benefit us in the long run? If we're Pigeon Forge, Tennessee, or if we're Orlando, Florida, would we even need to let anybody know about where we're located and what we have to offer? Even though in Pigeon Forge, they have a budget of $9 million a year for advertising. So I'd like to show you a few videos about Putnam County and the City of Palatka. The first video is an excerpt of a longer video showcasing Putnam County. It was made probably in the early 60s and represents the last consolidated effort to promote Putnam County until just recently. Well, I was really out of hand for the presentation, to be honest with you.
We can take the other items if you guys want to work on the technical portion.
If you'd like to, I have a laptop out there that we can connect into the system.
Just there, five minute break.
So, my question is, why would someone want to come to Putnam County to live? So, one example I can share with you about recently is a couple who moved into our neighborhood. They moved from, it's probably arguably the nicest gated subdivision in Putnam County to the South Historic District. So they'll be great additions to our neighborhood, they'll fill a house that had been vacant for a while of time, and they really like Putnam County. So I can tell you right up front, I'm not a salesman, okay? I don't have a degree in marketing, all right? I do have a degree from Stetson University, Bachelor of Business Administration, but this is just something that we took on as a communications committee in the logic group. So, the county received a grant from the Department of Economic Opportunity, and they contracted with a group called Avalanche Consulting. So that group met with about 90 stakeholders in Putnam County, and what they did was, after they met with them, they went back and they came up with a plan for what they feel like we should be doing in our area. So if you look in your... What we have in here is our excerpts from the EEO report. So when we had the 90 stakeholders present, they wanted us to start telling a positive story about Putnam County's future, and they wanted us to come up with an economic development strategy with a specific set of goals. One of those goals, talent, infrastructure, business climate, entrepreneurship, marketing, and communications. So ultimately, in the marketing communications, the goal is for Putnam County to be nationally recognized as premier location to live, work, and visit. That's the goal of the marketing campaign there. So on occasion, I'll speak with someone who comes into our office who's filing for homestead, and I say, "How did you find out about Putnam County?" And so invariably, whether they're from Oklahoma, or they're from St. Augustine, or whether they're from the Florida Keys, Utah, the list goes on and on, they all say, "We just love Putnam County, there's very little traffic, the people are here..." There's very little traffic, the people are here, and it's beautiful." So that's the type of people that are coming to Putnam County. But the problem is, they're just stumbling upon Putnam County. The first page of your package talks about the simmerings, how they looked all across the nation for a place to live. They looked, they narrowed it down to Florida, they looked all over Florida for a place to live. They went to St. Augustine, fortunately, the Realtor there said, "Hey, how about Palaka? Have you tried over there?" So they, they came over here and bought a home. Those are the type of people that stumble upon Putnam County. So the DEO consultants recognize the Chamber of Commerce role is really kind of outside of the goals stated in the report. So one of the questions was, you know, "What are we paying the Chamber $5,000 a year for?" Well, if that's all you're paying the Chamber to promote, uh, Palaka, you're not paying them enough, alright? They can't do anything with $5,000 a year. And I'm not putting words in, I shouldn't be putting words into Dana Jones' mouth. You can have her come here and probably tell you the same thing. So the question has been posed, "Why doesn't the city just do their own campaign?" Well, what needs to take place is a coordinated effort between all the different entities of Putnam County, whether it's the city of Palaka, city of Walaka, Interlochen, Putnam County, the school system. We all need to put together a hub where from that hub, then you can then go out and find funding to an area of interest that you, uh, have an interest in. So until recently, like we saw in our video there, Putnam County had done nothing really since the early sixties to promote anything about Putnam County. So recently, the company, uh, came to the county and they said, "We will promote Putnam County for you," okay? So I'm gonna show you what they, uh, the concept they came up with. So what you're looking at is a series of videos that the county has, a series of five or six videos, and they break them into different areas, alright? And the way they pay for that is, they get sponsors. So they promised a sponsor, "If you'll pay, you promote this video, then we'll put a link on there to your website." So while you're watching the video, then you can, after it's done, you can click on a website and it'll take you, take you right there to that particular person, alright? So I'm gonna show you what one of these videos looks like. It's developed with the county.
I had you call mad. You got, you got commission of board.
The other one played correct.
Yes.
Did you test your, before you did your laptop? Did you test your laptop?
My laptop ready, yeah.
Basically, I can just pull it up, you just pull it up, and then disconnect a video to it. Do you have this, this also? Oh, that should take.
Can we try it again, Jonathan? Yeah, get the shot, or I can pull it up on the website.
Is that on the Chamber's website? Um, no, it's on our website. Yeah, any of those, at the top. Okay. Just click in one of the boxes.
This is recreation quality.
You want this one?
The other? Alright, well.
Because the volume down at the bottom right, the task bar is all the way up.
It's already up.
All the way up.
It's all the way up. It's not muted, and it's not muted. Click on the video itself, click on the, uh, the image, uh, click on that. Play, hit play.
Well, we're gonna proceed. Obviously, this is not, um, you know, the best presentation that you all are gonna be hearing in a while. But the point being is, I would challenge you to look at the county videos, okay? And so watch those. There's about five or six. How many people in here have seen the county videos, other than maybe a presentation that I gave? Okay? No one in the room really has seen these county videos. So the point is, you've got this pretty good series of videos out there and you've got the government people that, I mean, the private sector that has sponsored this video, but it, nobody sees it, okay? Nobody's taking it outside the four walls of Putnam County. So I had one more video for you, Jonathan, you might bring up the Chamber video if you can.
Well, it's, it's right there again in the next slide.
Yeah, it's essentially in the slide. I don't know that you can get any better, uh, sound on that or not.
Is it still trying to go through the Bluetooth?
That's what's wrong with it, I, I can be.
No, I'm talking about the Bluetooth of this wireless speaker.
Is it paired?
No, this was plugged in the wire, we brought these speakers in. But it's still like a flash and pair.
Is it paired?
On the side of it, it's like it's flashing.
Hold that button, man, until.
Yep.
First video worked, I doubt it's the technology.
Well, no, if it's, if it's, it could be interfering.
Well, how many of y'all have seen the Chamber of Commerce video? You know, one, two, maybe people, three, okay? The Chamber of Commerce video is a great video, okay? It's probably A-minus quality video, but the Chamber does play this, okay, on occasion in different areas of the country. Primarily related to getting people to come to, like, the bathroom and that sort of thing. So I would encourage you not only to, um, watch the video, but you've got this big white space on your website, on the front page, that would fit perfectly in it. So I'd encourage you to get this Putnam County Chamber of Commerce video in there because it showcases the city of Palaka and it showcases Putnam County. It's a great video, it's very well made. So what do we want you guys to do, okay? What is the action? I've got it on mono sound if that helps any.
Well, that's on the first place. How's that? If you disconnect that one, can you do it? He's got a speaker. No, it's not, it's some Bluetooth connection, it's not wired.
Not a parent.
Just play it at the same time.
Yeah, that's it, I think that's it.
Are you ready to hit play?
I might just play them at the same time.
Hit it at the same time.
You wanna try that?
Wanna try it?
You try everything else?
Sync it up?
You ready, Don?
Alright. Let's do it. Well, I think, uh, Don's gonna do it.
What's gonna happen, the process is in memory, it's gonna be all synced.
You gonna hit it, Tim?
Alright, let's do it.
I'm playing the one on your website now, Tim. Is that better?
Ah, this is, halfway. This is some hot takes, buddy, here.
Good luck, it's gonna be memory and process.
I'm on terrorism right now. I'm gonna hit it.
The actor's all over, if you wanna get Jonathan's autograph. Well, if you'd let me use the mic, then it would work flawlessly, okay?
Oh.
Anyway.
Yeah, well, one of the way, your equipment's probably newer.
So what is the communications committee asking the commission to do? We're asking you to allocate funds, which is an estimate only, okay? It's over a two-year time period, to implement the DEO-sponsored report developed by Avalanche Consulting, that you also participate in the selection of a successful candidate through an RFP that would let you know what would be done for the city of Palaka before any funds would be spent, okay? It is anticipated that a professional designated party would be responsible for making sure your goals within the RFP would be accomplished. But that's what the communications committee has put together. You know, we've been working on this, I look back through some of my notes, since 2013, okay? And the, we wanted to, we were ready to make a report, we had met with a lady in our community. This lady is, works for a national advertising firm out of New York, her office is in Long Island. She moved to Putnam County and I said, "Why did you choose Putnam County? You could have chosen any place virtually in the world to live and work." And she said, "We love Putnam County. They have lived all over the United States and in the Caribbean, and they came here." She works for a national advertising firm. I said, "What, what do we need to do in Putnam County?" She said, "You need to take it outside these four walls, let people know what kind of a great community that you have." She put together a image improvement plan that's in your package, okay? At no cost to the committee. Her boss, Arthur Germain, flew down from New York, met with some of our county and municipal leaders, and said, "This is what Putnam County needs to do." They put together a sample RFP, no cost to the committee, no cost to the county, to say, "This is what you need to put out there, or modify it slightly, but this is what you need to put out there to get someone to submit bids." So, like I said, I'm not a salesperson, I love Putnam County, I love Palaka, my family and I are invested heavily in Palaka and in Putnam County, and we want to see it grow and succeed. One of the problems with Putnam County is 29.6% of our tax base is in the top 10 taxpayers of our county. We have got to diversify and we've got to go out and target, we've got to get some higher-end housing in Putnam County and in city of Palaka. We can't keep relying on businesses to foot the bill and to pay a majority of the way. So, um, we're not in a great situation as, as far as that goes, and we've gotta do something differently than what we've done in the past. And is this it? You know, I don't know. Until you see the RFP and you could potentially say, "We've seen it, we don't like what we see, for what we're gonna get, then we can back out." But the funds need to be there. The DEO gave a timeline on when this, when this project should start. Timeline was August of 2016. Think about it, it's a two-year type process. You start the process with a self-image, um, campaign internally. What can we do to say, "We want Palaka to have a positive self-image"? So that's part of what that campaign, that's how it would start out. But if you think about the advertising timeframe of it, the gubernatorial race is getting ready to start in 18, okay? By the time you reach a certain point, advertising is just gonna be derivative, okay? That's why I think they suggested that we start in August of 16 and we could get going and then right when the presidential campaign ended, then we could get involved in this. So we're already a little bit behind the eight in, in this process. Our goal with the communications committee is just to hand the ball off. We've done our work, this is what we think needs to be done, as does the Department of Economic Opportunity, Avalanche Consulting. So really, the recommendation falls more on Avalanche Consulting than it does on our committee. They're the professionals, they know what needs to be done. I'm here to answer any questions, but basically, we're handing the ball off, okay? We've handed it off to the county, we've handed it off to the school board, we've handed it off to all the other municipalities. The only municipality that said they didn't want to participate formally was Interlochen, and we, uh, we believe that that's because they asked us to do some additional research, finding out what other communities utilize and how much they invest in, and we didn't do that, okay? So that's kind of on our committee, that we didn't go back to them and say, "Other committees like, other cities like you invest this much." It wasn't that much money, I think it was around $6,000, but for them, you know, they were being very, you know, fiscally minded and wanted to make sure that any dollars they had spent, they had a reason to spend. So Larry Harvey said he would re-approach them with some additional information to see if he could get them back on board. But basically, we want to just pass the ball off to y'all and say, "It's your baby now, you do what you want, we're not gonna be offended in one way or another, whether you choose to participate in this or not." You know, it'd be nice for you to be able to say, "This is exactly what we're gonna get if we allocate that money." You won't know exactly what you're gonna get until you do an RFP, and you won't know even within that process, how that actions might be tweaked to better reach people outside Putnam County. So that's my presentation. I'm sorry it didn't work as smoothly as we wanted to, but I would encourage you to go and look at the Chamber video, encourage you to get that video on your website. If you can get the county videos on your website, that's like it's on ours, that would be good too, because they have some Palaka information around them as well. So I'd be glad to answer any questions, but, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your hard work, as well as the committee. Um, are there any questions?
This Avalanche, uh, Consulting, um, have they, where's their track record? I mean, who else have, have it served that we could even look and see how, how they've been productive and see if, um, those other cities or whatever benefited as it related to that? And you say it's a two-year timeframe, is it two-year timeframe from, that they're gonna be implement, implementing that process? Or they're gonna only promote for two years or promote, when do they stop promoting?
Sure. Avalanche Consulting is just a firm hired by the Department of Economic Opportunity with the state of Florida, alright? All they do is make recommendations, they don't implement anything, alright? They say you should get with a marketing company, that marketing company should produce an RFP. When they do that RFP, then you say to that company, "Okay, show me what you've done. Show me what experience you've had, show me what successes you've had. Show me how Putnam County, city of Palaka, is like some of the entities that you've worked with." So that, you will So, that, you won't know that until a person with an RFP comes in and gives you their sales pitch.
Avalanche did the asset mapping. They did a report on asset mapping that was done last year. And the only thing they did was make, they made a recommendation as to what Putnam should do from a, from a communications standpoint, to better themselves. So, they looked at, they did a true SWOT analysis of the community as a whole, and that's what that was. And I, I read Avalanche report, and it was an awesome report. I mean, it was a great report, it covered all bases. And it's, it provided a significant amount of data for this community. So, you, I encourage anybody to look at that report.
I agree with the report. I think the report is definitely something that is, like you said, if you like a better words, it's just, it's great. My concern is, and if anybody has concerns about the image of Palaca and Putnam County, I'm one that have those concerns. That's why I'm sitting in this position today, because I want to change the image that is portrayed when it comes down to Palaca and Putnam County. It's, it's one of those things that we can't afford not to do, but we can't afford to do it. And, and I'm speaking on, from my perspective, I'm not speaking on, with anyone else's perspective on the commission. As far as RFQ, I would like to see a RFPQ. And that's gonna bring those individuals that are bidding for that particular thing, if it gets to that point, down and present it to us ourselves. Present, make them present to us in-house, like you've done. Because my concern is, with the $51,000, if you break that up over to 22, uh, 24 months, that's $2,139. That's a lot of money coming out of the City of Palaca budget, especially when we've already had to do some moving around of funds. Back there in Putnam County, I'm one that have those concerns. That's why I'm sitting in this position today, because I want to change the image that is portrayed when it comes down to Palaca and Putnam County. It's, it's one of those things that we can't afford not to do, but we can't afford to do it. And, and I'm speaking on, from my perspective, I'm not speaking on, with anyone else's perspective on the commission. As far as RFQ, I would like to see a RFPQ. And that's gonna bring those individuals that are bidding for that particular thing, if it gets to that point, down and present it to us ourselves. Present, make them present to us in-house, like you've done. Because my concern is, with the $51,000, if you break that up over to 22, uh, 24 months, that's $2,139. That's a lot of money coming out of the City of Palaca budget, especially when we've already had to do some moving around of funds. Again, I'm for, for it, but how did you come up with this number if an RFQ has not already gone out? That's a question. If we want to pay $51,000, why not pay it to our chambers where we know where the money is going? We know that it's gonna be used in our county, we know that it's gonna be used to promote our county. Since we're already paying them for image, why not let's increase what we're giving them? If we wanna go from $5,000 to say $10,000? So, those are some of the questions that I have. I, I, I see where someone else from the outside came in, but who can better sell Palaca than the people of Palaca? And then again, I say it prior to, until the elected officials, appointed officials, change the conversation that we are having or that they are having concerning Palaca, I don't care if you go to the farthest end of the earth and have something that's out circulated. If the conversation here does not reflect the conversation that's gonna be shown on anything outside of Palaca concerning the video, it means absolutely nothing. And that's my concern. So, even if we have to do, come together and do our own image campaign amongst Palaca first, and again, we've heard individuals in office or elected, in high positions, speak ill of Palaca. And if we continue to speak ill of Palaca, say for instance, this video gets to, I believe in the six degrees of separation. If this video was to be seen by somebody in California, and I happen to have, or somebody from Palaca happens to have the connection, "Hey, I saw this video about Palaca." They're gonna call in, and if the conversation coming from this end is negative, what do you think the reflection of that person on the other end is gonna be?
Yeah, so to answer a couple of your questions, I mean, you threw a bunch of them out.
I did, I apologize.
The CSG, Communication Strategy Group, is the lady who lives here in Putnam County. They're the ones that put together a rough draft of how much it would actually cost to fund Palaca. So, that is just, if you don't have an R, you haven't funded an RFP, okay? So, she estimated that this is approximately for a two-year time period, what it would cost.
But if she, I understand that. But how about let's leave money off the table until we see what people can offer us? Because if we're already putting, I mean, it's already out there, that we're asking for this specific amount from the City of Palaca and every other, you know, entity in Putnam County, in Putnam County. And I, I wholeheartedly support the image campaign, let me not, let's make that correct. But let's not throw out money if it's not even gonna cost that. Because what we've done is we've given a preconceived notion of, "Oh, okay, we gonna, we have this money set aside, or we have this money if we were to go forth and do it." So, somebody's gonna come in on the high end of something, versus coming in on the low end, or coming in for interest of making Palaca a lot better than what it is. So, I don't think at this point, the discussion of money shouldn't even be the issue. Let's discuss the image and what we want, how we want it, and then allow them to come to us, and then we talk money.
Well, that's a good point. There are gonna be people competing, you know, for the water vacuum, and I think that's part of the process. If I were a firm, and I was going to come in and do the effort that it's gonna take to put together an RFP, I think I would want to know, you know, is there money out there that they're gonna be, that they have the budget to pay me if I'm gonna go through all these efforts?
So, in other words, you put your money where your mouth is?
Right, exactly.
You could put your money where your mouth is, but again, I mean, that's perfectly fine. But when I'm in class, they present the information to me, then I take the test.
Just saying, uh, 'cause what I gather from the conversation before, you know, what you presented to us is, based on the amount of money we put up, is the amount of, is what we'll get out of it, is what? That's what you're saying?
Exactly. So, the chamber is highly interested in putting their own RFP together. To be a partner, the Chamber of Commerce, our local Chamber of Commerce, is highly interested in putting together their own RFP. And to be a part of this campaign, I agree 100%. The other two individuals, Ms. Franz with this Communication Strategy Group, she's local. She knows our community, maybe not as well as, you know, Dana Jones does, 'cause she's been here longer. There's another individual that I talked to that is starting her own communication group, that lives in Melrose, that she's been here only about seven years.
So, that means they have a vested interest, why not present what they can do for us? And then let's move forward. Again, we're talking about money, and that's, and, and we know money moves. But at this point, if you have these individuals that are in Putnam County, that are interested in promoting Putnam County, or changing the image of Putnam County, I still wholeheartedly believe that they should be able to provide us with something. Because from what I'm thinking, or what I'm gathering, conversations has always, already been had. So, if we would have passed something like this last week, seemed like to me the person who was gonna do it was already picked. And that's just my perspective of it. So, again, if you want us to be at the table, allow us to be at the table. Allow us to help come up with the criteria or everything.
I don't have any more to say, I think I've done that conversation.
Well, and, and the other question, if, if we choose not to, would y'all not promote Palaca?
This is beyond me, okay? This is, this ball is being handed off to this commission, to the county commissioners, to the school boards. You know, we don't even know if the county's gonna fund it, okay? Or the school board's gonna fund it, or where are these funds are gonna be found? Where, I think Justin kinda hit the nail. It's great to agree to it in concept, okay? You can ask people to come in and say, "What are you gonna do for Putnam County?" If there's not gonna be any funds allocated, you can say, "I had a great presentation. We totally believe that this ought to be done, I'm sorry." Saying that this is important enough, that I have a long enough vision that this needs to be implemented. There are tons of things, we have water pipes. I live in the city, so we have water pipes that need to be fixed, okay? We have parks that need benches or swings. We have police athletic league that could, how many basketballs could you afford for $50,000? It's, we're looking, we're looking right here, okay? We're looking right in front of us. We need to have a little bit of vision and say, "What do we want to accomplish? What do I want to be known for as a leader here in Palaca? How do we accomplish that?" We, this is, this is our, this is the end of our presentation. We pass the ball, we say, "You need to allocate this, you need the budget for it, and then put out an RFP, and if you've got a better thought or a better way to, to accomplish it, you know, we're all for it. If you can get some folks to come in here and do that without any financial obligation, if they're willing to do that, then that's great. That would be, that'd be, that'd be fine with me." So, we're just saying, here's a report from Department of Economic Opportunity, Avalanche Consulting. They're identifying marketing communication as one of the four different areas that need to be addressed. We're saying, we have one group, that one professional group that has said, "They believe it's gonna cost about $450,000. If someone else could come in there and do it cheaper, through the RFP process, that's fine, more power to them." You all make the decision. There would be a committee, and someone on the city would be on that committee that would review those proposals, and then you would decide which person, proposal best meets the needs not only Palaca, but the whole, but the whole county. Can you do something independent? Can you take your $50,000, or whatever that amount might be, and do something independent? The problem is, we've done that in the past. Palaca is our nature. Someone paid for that campaign, that logo, that saying, okay? I don't know what effort went into that, but it's just like you were saying, when you go out to California, and you hit our website, and you have that IP address, what do you do with it? Okay? Who monitors that? That company is the one that monitors that. They call up somebody and say, "Hey, I just heard about Palaca." Who are they calling? Someone who's gonna give them a positive image, a positive answer about Palaca, and not just a cursory, "Oh, well, you know, we don't, we don't know about that, you have to call so-and-so." So, I'm not sure how it all works, I just know that if it's not funded, it doesn't work. So, I know there's a lot of questions, and I can't answer all of them.
And if your website don't get hit, it's not put up in, in the top of the list for, for the viewers?
Putnam County Chamber of Commerce, you know, if you go on to Google, and you type in Putnam County Chamber of Commerce, they've done an excellent job, I mean, it's right at the top. And there's other Putnam counties across our nation, so they have worked on that. And you're exactly right, there's services that you buy to put you up there, wherever you need to be. You type in Palaca Ford on YouTube, it's not pretty, okay? Do it sometime, and as soon as you get it. So, it's a, you know, you saw the front page of the presentation. It's so many different angles that I'm not a professional, and I can't address every different area that needs to be. So, it's a matter of forward vision, it's a matter of, do we need to change anything? I think we, we all come to the conclusion that we do. How do we, how do we fund that? How do, how do we make that happen? So, there's probably multiple avenues, but that's the one that, that we recommended, so. And you, feel free to call me afterwards, you know, or some other day, but we put in hours and hours and hours of research on this, and we're at the point now where it's past our level of expertise. We just need to hand it off, and let y'all make the tough decisions.
But did we have any players at the table? I mean, as it related to, even the other municipalities? Were any of the municipalities at the table?
Yes, we're all at the table. It's done through logic.
Okay.
So, it came through Logic Communications Committee. I've got Ms. Ketch's other speaker card, and then I'll kinda give my, I'll give my comments after Ms. Ketch.
Cleveland Gisions, 1027 South 12th Street. Every one of you are, are ambassadors of goodwill. Every time you all go out of the state, out of the city, out of your homes, people look to you, and if you call in to ask about Palaca, they should be calling. You are elected representatives. And while she's not here tonight, you all probably know that Barry Lawson Brown is one of the best ambassadors of goodwill you'll ever have. She carries information about Palaca all over the world. That being said, I don't think you need to put out $51,000, or even $2,000 to hire a personal, a firm to market Palaca. If you want free videos, the Flow Arts School would be more than delighted to make that a project. And a lot in high school did a wonderful video for free of, of the Ravine Gardens several years ago. You all have a video that you basically got for free, when you paid the $210,000 to have the study done on the Riverfront Park. Mr. Ray included a video at no cost. That video is still available, and it may still be on the city website. I respect Mr. Parker greatly, I work with him, and I like his work. But I think the mayor did a little ahead, on a previous, on a previous island, he said, "We all know the financial situation the city is in." We do all know it. We can't, I don't think we can afford the $51,000, or any amount for that matter, to do PR for the city or to do marketing. You can make your own videos, you can do your own marketing, if it has to be done, do it later. As to the Chamber of Commerce, they are not a personal represent, a PR firm of the city. By city code, they are the economic development agent for the City of Palaca. That's what the $51,000 is for. Now, if they want to do a video, great, they would have to include Palaca. As far as whether or not Putnam County would include Palaca on their video, seems like they have to, since Palaca's the county state, and all the Putnam County government offices are in the City of Palaca. So, I would ask you not to put out any amount of money to do any marketing for, for Palaca. Mr. Campbell said it very well. Whenever you all, if you're speaking, promote Palaca when you speak. Your, your meetings go out on YouTube, your meetings go out on the Gospel Kitchen station. So, you all are the best ambassadors, and right now, I don't think the city can afford that. Not when we just heard that the city water rate's gonna have to go up, and all the water lines have to be replaced. So, I think, don't do it now, and we cannot afford it. Thank you.
Any further comments from the commission? You got something? I, um, I happen to be that person, we both have one marketing degree, but I have two. I also teach at a college of business. And we've created a partnership with the state, with the university in the state of Florida, particularly their Center for Economic Excellence. We've gotten more than what we paid for, because we haven't paid for anything. I made the suggestion a while back, and that we also look at options with our local universities to see what we can do in order to be able to effectively market the community. I think the report is absolutely on point, I think the work that you've done is super. I do think that there's a need for both an internal marketing strategy to deal with, the community as a whole, and, and truly internal branding, from the standpoint of really correcting a whole bunch of mistaken beliefs from citizens. And I think that you are directly on point when it comes to that. I do think that there's a need for an external marketing strategy as it relates to the county and the county strategy. I don't think that the I don't think that the money that we give the chamber is enough to do the things that we need to do. I think that $5,000 is a joke when it comes to trying to market communities as a whole. I can easily say that in order to invite others into your house, you have to clean it up first. And so, I think that within this community as a whole, we've got to clean up our internal belief and the way that our outlook on people is kinda like, you know, we, we don't see our community for the beauty that it has and sometimes we just become blind here because we're around it everywhere. And I think we have to continually advertise ourselves internally and invite our own citizens back into the marketplace first. That has been, I think, a catastrophic failure of the county as a whole. Public relations is definitely a part of economic development. But I do think that we need to explore other options outside of it. We have, I don't think that the chamber, one, I don't think the chamber has the staff, just as the report says, that the chamber does not have the staff nor the ability to create those promotions in-house. I've seen the quality of some of the advertisements from the school district side, but again, it's not what you want for a national campaign. I do think that we can create partnerships and reduce some of the costs associated with this particular strategy by working with the University of Florida or University of Central Florida or Bethune-Cookman or FAMU or any of these other schools in the area, J U, North Florida, even St. John's River State. Because they do a great job of media relations at the local college. And I think that we do, I think that that's an option that we need to explore to get that number down. I agree with Commissioner Campbell that once we put that number on the street, it's hard to take it off because you kinda set yourself up for all your bids to come in at that range. I would suggest that, you know, we get letters of support from the entities, understanding what the proposed numbers have been. And it creates, I think, a different source of commitment, but to lock yourself in to say, "Hey, we're gonna put 450 out for two years and this is what we expect to get in response." It, it puts you in a heck of a situation. I do think that there has to be something done collectively. There has to be a uniform message that goes out to this community. I don't necessarily think that the number put in place gets us where we need to be. That's a fragment of what has to be done in overall. Because 450 to advertise this community is not gonna do it. There's gonna have to be a change of mindset from an advertising standpoint, from a marketing standpoint, really from the way that we start to invite businesses in and do a whole bunch of other things to get us to where we need to be. In the marketing world, 450 is not a lot of money. In the real world, it is for us, in this community. And so, you know, when we talk $5,000, I'll tell you, $5,000 gets you one billboard on Reed Street leading over to 207. And it's gonna cover you for one year. That's all you're gonna get for $5,000. It's a drop in the bucket and it won't touch, it won't touch anything but the 30,000 cars that pass through here every day. And most people won't even notice it. But there has to be some other strategies in place. When you look at Google, when you look at some of the other things that are out there from a social media standpoint, Commissioner Moore can probably attest to the fact that the way that we set up hits, it can be done in a cost-effective manner that puts you where you need to be. There are companies out there to do that for less than a dollar a month. And they provide you with the ability to be at the top of your marketplace. They monitor it, they adjust it on a regular basis that puts you where you need to be. But there's so many phases of this thing that have to be in place. It's gonna take more than just what's out there. My concern is the fact that we've got a company that has plans and services pro bono. And they've done a lot of the lab work. And my concern is that we find ourselves with them having an unfair competitive advantage at the end of the day as to what's going on. And that's probably the biggest concern that I have. And I know you can put it on the streets as much as you want, but if they drew it up and they're gonna bid on it, it creates, it creates a perception that I don't wanna be a part of. But I think that, I think it's necessary for us to do it. Again, I applaud you on your efforts. I just think that we also need to look at what phases of this, what phases of this proposal can we get through partnerships with other places at a fraction of the cost as it relates to some of it that's in there. So, there's a cost breakdown on where we are from a reputation standpoint. And we need to see where we can save and also get the quality necessary to move this community forward. Again, 450 over two years, when you're talking about real marketing strategies, it's nothing when you talk about a community with the assets that we have. We won't even touch the tip of the iceberg in marketing Putnam County. But we need to start. I think the pilot study has to be done with an internal branding strategy. And that can be done at a fraction of that cost and it could be an easy buy-in because if we can successfully change the image internally, then it makes it a lot easier for us to start to move that campaign outward. Any other comments? I'm in support of, I'm in support of the campaign. I just think that we need to look at ways to, ways that we can, we can save or even come up with a consensus overall. You know, I have absolutely no problem with the city of Palatka supporting the campaign. And I think it's necessary that we at least put some resources out towards it. I think it's a matter of setting the parameters to where they need to be in order to get us to where we need to go. I just think financially, we're not in a situation where we can put $50,000 on the streets right now over the two-year period. We just took an $80,000 hit. And there are more hits, and a $600,000 hit. So, as we continually do those things, we've got to make sure that we address everything. You know, the marketing strategy is critical. It's necessary. It's long overdue. And I think that you're definitely on the right track. I'm just looking for ways that we can get a dollar's worth of work for 50 cents right now because that's all we got. We only have 50 cents. But I do think that we need to put that 50 cents out. And so, I, I think that we need to put, you know, we need to commit at some level to you. And that's kinda, that's my thought. Any other concerns from the commission?
I agree. I'm for the campaign and again, putting out the resources that we have. I think that would be beneficial to what you're trying to accomplish. Or what you, that we as y'all want to see happen.
And I wholeheartedly support the campaign as well and just to echo the same sentiments. It's not that we're saying no, but we at least need to look at some of the options that's out there to see if we can get the best bang for the buck and also utilize some of the other services that's available to us out there and do the evaluation and go through a due diligence process that may help us out a lot.
I mean, I think in all fairness, some of those considered, doesn't have to be tonight, but at some point, we've gotta consider what numerical commitment we wanna make to this project. You know, I do believe there has to be some teeth behind it, but I think, I think at some point, we've gotta think about where we're gonna be as far as the support of this project.
Can we push it? Can we push it out and speak with both Matt and the city manager to see where it from a numbers standpoint? I know we got the budget coming up. How soon would you need the commitment from the city in order for us to be able to make a comfortable commitment?
Yesterday. Well, I know the logic group is gonna be meeting, I think, next week.
Just call, hold in favor, say aye. Aye. Close motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on, item number six on the agenda, brownfield project assessments.
Yes, sir. Multiple Phase Ones have been invested on sites throughout the city. Phase Twos have commenced on select sites that warranted Phase Two assessments. We're waiting for the test results to come back on those sites, but we have heard from the engineering and management consultants that it looks favorable. It might just be the perception of brownfield. Also, we started a public input process last week for the workshop at the Pride Martin Center, purpose of discussing ideas for the redevelopment of two key areas, Cypress Mills and the 11th Street corridor. We had a decent turnout. There were some very good ideas shared. We're looking for a summary from Matt Ashby, the consultant. Hopefully be able to share it up with the commission in the coming weeks. We also discussed the improvements to Booker Park. And I brought that concept plan with me tonight, shortly. Staff started looking at Booker Park improvements after directed to do so from the commission as far as recreation expansion and taking into account the regional stormwater pond that was funded by the water management district. This plan takes into account the funded improvements from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection through the FERDA grant. And it also takes into account the pond funded by the water management district and potentially some expanded recreation opportunities with baseball and softball fields over current construction debris landfill area. The fill from the stormwater pond is being proposed to cap that site and clear it under that stormwater pond. So, we're sharing this with you tonight. If you'd like a copy, I can email it out and we would like to get your feedback.
I'll tell you, one of the groups that we saw this, this week, there's a presentation at the League of Mayors by the, by a consultancy group. And what they were doing is they were actually using natural resources to deal with some of the stormwater issues. And they were, and she was able to show some of the projects that they had, where they were able to save billions of dollars as it related to some of the things that were in place. I would love to look at opportunities with this particular project. Firstly, when she gave a presentation, first thing that came to mind was this project. And possibly the South Story project as an opportunity to see if there was a way to tie in our resources to that. We have our contact and I'll give that over to you. But I think when we look at this concept of Booker Park, particularly the expansions, which will allow us to turn into a community park, can be several of the needs that we have from a recreation standpoint, from a community standpoint, from a health standpoint, when we look at the walks that are in place, a lot of this is funded through the grants that we've received. And it also allows us to be able to transition our, our public workers department and to get us to a point where we can actually better serve our citizens. And so, if most people recall, this, this area of Booker Park where those, those fields, the new fields were located, was only landfill area for the most part. And so, it, you know, being able to put in the additional coverage, it makes opportunities for us to, to get a better use out of that area for green space and really, and really do some things that will benefit this community as a whole. I think John, I think, I think Mr. Griffin has done a great job. He and Ms. Tucker have worked diligently on this project. And I definitely appreciate the work that you guys have in place. There's been some consultation as well with Jim Roach, who's, who's hit the floor, who's hit the ground running coming in. And I think that, I'm excited about the, the idea of bringing recreation and activities, including some cultural arts activities back into the city of Palatka, to be able to have outdoor concerts and do some other things. When you look at the event area that's in the middle of the screen, there is a event lawn and sports field. It gives us, it meets our basic needs and we maximize that space and use the natural resources that are surrounding that field. And it's gonna lead to the revitalization of that entire area. And I think that this project in itself is gonna be a catalyst to us dealing with the immediate tax base that we have overall within the city.
The other update I have is we're gonna bring back to the commission an evaluation of four potential sites for the public works facility upgrades, one including the current location and three other locations. We're gonna do a staff review and scoring and bring that back to your consideration. Hopefully in the next one.
And this Booker Park project, just for the record, is item number seven on the agenda. And we think Mr. Griffin again, for his work on that. Moving on, if there's no other questions or comments about the Booker Park project.
It's a perfect thing for rebranding city of Palatka. So, that's just one of the other things in terms of walking Palatka, shaping up.
Well, we think that the multi-fields creates a draw for tournaments, creates opportunities to increase bed tax and some other things within the community and to start to really pull people back in here, kinda like they were when we were the baseball and softball hub. So, overall, things we're looking at. Moving on to administrative reports. Mr. Holmes? Mr. Yule?
Yes, sir. Thank you for talking to me.
Welcome. Chief? Those two of y'all. Yes, sir.
Our big party place was called Camp Saturday. Some of you guys show up, give us some support. I think forever starts at seven. After that, basically, everybody goes play, they're around to golf. These are around 12:30, 1 o'clock, lunch and awards and all kinds of stuff, a lot of raffling and stuff. Looks like it's gonna be another good tournament, pretty much full. Another night, fire station been busy last couple of weeks, 110 service calls, calls for service. We all are hosed, which is about 2,000 feet of hose just last week. We sponsored CSX training last week, three days of training with them and the county. After action, the Isaiah Festival report, we had no incidents, about 80 man-hours from our station there. Palatka Pride was a good success just last one we had. Had a dozen guys from the station with that. Big turnout, I heard. I went to the Thomas meeting today, local mitigation strategy task force meeting, which was a really good meeting. I go to all of them. There's $1.2 million earmarked for the Putnam County there for hazard mitigation, leftover money for Matthew. So, with the scoring of some of our projects, we've got a real good chance to get a good chunk of that money. Talked to Jonathan about it, we both got projects in mind for that. And I think we've got top scores. Should be a good chance to get some good money from those projects to hopefully upgrade some of our facilities and some of our stormwater stuff.
How's explorers doing?
Doing what?
Explorers.
Doing good, doing good. I think we're up to nine, but it hit and missed with sports and everything, but it's doing good. We talked to the county a little bit about maybe combining some of the meetings and stuff with them because they're gonna explore post too and try to co-mean with some of that activity and stuff. But doing good.
Sounds good. Chief Shaw?
Just wanna touch on a couple of things. Follow-up on Chief Lamb, in reference to Palatka Pride cleanup this past Saturday, approximately 40 people attended. We had over 40 bags that was collected, three tires that was collected. Very good turnout. Looking forward to our next one. Speaking of our next event for Palatka, it has been moved from April 15th to 22nd, April 22nd, due to the Easter weekend. So, we'll be hosting on the 22nd and we have began advertising the change as of yesterday. The other thing I wanna touch on is on April 14th, we're doing Kids Success Day, which will be held at CL Overture in conjunction with Partner Drew and Justice. And we'll have a little bit more to report on that at a later date.
What time is that starting?
For Kids Success Day? What time is that starting, Brett?
10:00.
Still Project Success, right?
That is a new event that is created, that was created with us and DJJ. In reference to awarding the kids that are doing good throughout these days.
Really had the Project Success episode.
Yes.
Shaquro?
Hey, Billy.
Spigot. Mr. Griffin, very familiar. So, you?
A great week, I believe, for all of us up in Tallahassee with all that the commissioner speak about that. I think it was a good trip. I think we made a lot of good contact. I think we've got some good news hopefully coming back. As Mr. Reynolds was alluding to and some of the questions that came up here tonight about funding opportunities, as you know, we will be beginning the budget process here shortly, so it'll be an opportunity then for us to really... We'll be, we need to be concerned about a couple of areas always, our insurance cost, our pension cost, those type of things. We just, once we get into the budget cycle, we'll certainly have more information on that. So we should be getting in touch with each one of the commissioners in the next month or so to get that started.
Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Moore.
I'll speak. Just real quickly, just not to piggyback off of what the city manager said, but we did have a very successful two days in Tallahassee. And just to let people know a little bit of the things that we're fighting for that I think were one of the major things that we was advocating for along with the Florida League of Cities is the funding for water supply and water quality projects. And I think that is one of the things that will be a great benefit to the city of Palakka. So that's just one of, we've had several issues that we were advocating for. And again, we had the pleasure of hearing some great news that may trickle down regarding the education system and some of the things that may be coming down the pipeline, some of the bills that were being supported by the legislators up there. So like I said earlier, I do believe that we're going to be having some, hearing some great news about the city of Palakka and Putnam County in the days and months to come.
Yeah, I mean, just to piggyback off of what Commissioner Campbell said, Tallahassee is a strong showing for the city of Palakka overall. Particularly with the Florida League of Cities, there are several legislative items that are out there which really attack home rule. It attacks the city municipality's ability to be able to govern themselves, things that are truly important for the community such as ours when we look at bed and breakfasts coming into the community. For example, there's new legislation that deals specifically with government's ability, with municipal governments' ability to deal with some of the zoning aspects of vacation rentals. There is a direct attack on the existence of CRAs. When we look at the CRAs overall, there's a proposal to end existing CRAs by the year 2037 that no funding for those CRAs can be, that hasn't been allocated, will not be in place after 2017. So we need to be careful that CRAs are the ways in which municipalities combat life and some of the other areas that our tax increment financing in order to look at some of the issues that we have of infrastructure. The CRA has been an important vehicle for us. The death of CRAs for rural communities in particular would be very, would be very harsh for us. Preemption as it relates to commerce, that's a major issue that comes up as it relates to attacking home rule. But overall, the city of Palakka went in, we met with several state representatives and senators who all had great knowledge of this community, its history, the resources that are here. We've got a couple of projects that are up for appropriation and they are moving within the house. And so we are hoping that by next week, we will have an idea as to where we are as it relates to appropriation if we have the final budget. And so we're moving forward with those things. There's some additional relationships. Even today on the drive back, we've got organizations that are trying to come into Palakka to look at business opportunities. And so it's an exciting time in this community. I think it's money well spent for us to go to Tallahassee to be able to use those relationships to continue to educate yourself on the process and to be able to network in order to make our community more visible. And people take notice of the fact that we're taking the process seriously. We had great meetings with Becker Polyathaw and they really paved the way for us as it related to things that were going on at our lobbying firms. And so you'll have to catch Jackson on the state side and also Mario, they've been working diligently to get Palakka in the right place. They actually go over and beyond the call of duty as it relates to finding other opportunities for us. We'll find out the standard. So Palakka's moving forward. It's festival time for us and we are looking forward and I'm tired because we've been running for the last week, but before we go, we want to make sure that we say happy birthday to Betsy Triggers.
Wow, happy birthday, girl.
And so everybody take a moment to recognize Betsy. Let's give her a round of applause.
Thank you.
And I did, I will not ask Commissioner Campbell to say happy birthday. Go ahead. Please join me as I sing happy birthday to Betsy. One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Betsy. Happy birthday to you.